Alrighty, if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America is two republics, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
We'll call this meeting to order at seven, oh, I think, yeah, okay, at 7:01 PM. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Von Kriks, Benedetti, Cabal Watten, Hornbeck, Peruzzi, Rodriguez, Resepa.
Here.
Form present, Mayor Resepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
May I make a motion to excuse Councilmember Von Kriks?
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. First item we have here is the minute approval of the September 16th, 2024 meeting.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered for the minute approval. Next up, I have a proclamation here for Constitution Week. If we could get a motion to make this part of the regular minutes. Oh, yeah, a motion to get support.
Support.
All right, moved and supported to make this a part of the regular meeting. Now, let's read this here briefly. We do, let me make sure I've got. Oh, four docs over there, okay. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2024 marks the 237th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to record official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. Whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, therefore be it resolved that I, Stephen Resepa, as mayor of the city of Trenton, Michigan, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. And the city of Trenton encourage all residents to participate in the community activities commemorating special occasion. Right, so thank you all for that. Next item we have here is, Madam Clerk, a public comment regarding items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment, we have reserved exclusively for items on today's agenda, and we'll have another opportunity for all other public comment at the close of the meeting. As that anyone wishing to speak, please begin with their name and address, direct all questions through me, and please limit their comments to five minutes. Not seeing anyone on Zoom here. Move right along then. All right, next up, we have under appointments here. I'm asking for this body's approval for my appointment of Leslie Figaroa to the Civic Commission for a term expiring October 1st, 2027.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Benedetti?
Yes.
Cabal Watten?
Yes.
Hornbeck?
Yes.
Peruzzi?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Resepa?
Substant.
Motion carries, Mayor Resepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you all for your concurrence there. Next, we have another 33rd District Court, the application for waiver, for waiver plan in regards to retirement health benefit systems. I will defer to our court alternate delegate, Councilman Benedetti.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the application for waiver and plan retirement health benefits system submitted by the 33rd District Court and authorize the mayor to sign approval of the application on behalf of the city of Trenton. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilman.
Sure.
All right, we've got a couple other things under general here. Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to take these. The first one we have here is from residents of Evergreen, Black Party request.
Thank you. The Evergreen residents are asking for permission to hold a Black Party and the road closure of Evergreen between Strom Avenue and True Wood. This would be on Saturday, October 12th, from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And this would be under the direction of the Police Department and the DPS Department.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Next up, we have Boxford residents also requesting a Black Party.
The Boxford residents are looking for permission to hold a Black Party on Boxford Street between Strom Avenue and True Wood. This would be on Saturday, October 26th, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, under the direction of the Police Department and the Department of Public Services.
So moved.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none unanimously so ordered. That's, thanks for the approval on both of those. Next, we have from River of Q's Pastry Pantry, Trunk or Treat.
Okay, thank you. River View Q, or River Q's Pastry Pantry is looking for permission to hold a trunk or treat at their store location at 2041 West Road on Friday, October 18th. This would be from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and it would be under the direction of the Police Department.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you all. And then last but not least here, the Small Biz Buys Trunk or Treat.
Thank you. Small Biz Buys is in conjunction with the Trenton Parks and Rec Department. They are looking for permission to hold a trunk or treat at the Kennedy Recreation Center parking lot from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. This would be on Sunday, October 27th, and also under the direction of the Police Department.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussions? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Madam Clerk. Appreciate that. All right, we'll go to department heads and officials now. The first item we have here is from our city administrator, Mr. Creach, our Wireless Links Upgrade and Maintenance.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you have a couple of proposals and your background information, this is for the wireless links. As you know, we did price out and check on hardware in all the buildings, and it was pretty expensive, plus we were going to have monthly maintenance costs. So last year, we upgraded the, upgraded and rerouted the connection system between City Hall and police. It, it's performed very well and everything, so this, this is the rest of the project that would upgrade the rest of the system. Give us more bandwidth, so we'll have better speed, replace and update the needed equipment to tie in the rest of our buildings. And should put us in a good spot going forward. So asking you to approve the attached quotes for the city of Trenton's point-to-point system upgrade and maintenance project in the amount of $40,881.
So moved.
Moved and supported. And if the Councilman Cabal Watten?
Yeah, Dean, just a question for you. I noticed that this company's out of Lorraine, Ohio, and do we, like, feel that there's, is there a possibility they're going to have to come back to do the work? Is that going to be, I guess, for like, you know, it's a two-hour-plus drive over to Lorraine. I did it several times in my career.
Yeah, we, we've used this company for, for the most part, for the last eight, eight years or so, and I haven't had any issues with response and coming in and doing maintenance and tune-ups. And they also do have the ability, a lot of times, to remote in and do whatever stuff they do and, and everything, but no, I, I don't have, their, their level of service and results has been very, very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anybody else? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Dean. Next up, from our DDA Director, Ms. Pousino, we have the Beckett and Raider Schematic Design and Construction Drawing Development for the Tree Pits Proposal.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Today I have the proposal to get schematic designs and drawings for the tree pits. This is the first step to improving the streetscape along West Jefferson and downtown Trenton. Attached to the request for action, you'll see examples of what the tree pits currently looked. These were taken in May 2024. DBW has done some improvements, but they definitely need to be updated because even with the improvements, they're so loose pavers and mulch is being spread because there's no proper border and pedestrian traffic causes them to go all over. The proposal will come up with a design with the city and the DDA to update, to extend the tree pits, come up with a proper border, and as well as looking to different tree species. Some of the trees are in poor conditions, and it's better to increase the diversity of the trees for their health. The proposal amount is in $24,315 even. The DDA has approved this out of their project fund. I asked the honor bodies to make a motion to approve the Beckett and Raider proposal for the.
So moved. Support.
They can moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing, Councilwoman Hornbeck?
I just had a question. Well, I know you said some of the trees would need to be replaced. Do you know about how many are going to be?
So through this, they will do a proper, obviously, diagnosis of some of the trees, which ones will need to remove, as well as maybe potentially coming up with a schedule if we want to, you change all the trees in the future. Obviously, we won't want to change them all in one time, but we keep, with the architect, she discussed coming up with a proper tree planting detail. So if we ever need to change these trees in the future, we will already have the plants ready to go as well.
But how, you don't know how many?
Like I said, it would be through this proposal, they would come up with that number.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. All right, next up from our DPS Director, Mr. Sargent, we've got a couple items here. First of being the recommendation of the Contract Award for Sewer Cleaning and Televising Project.
Thank you, Mayor. On July 1st, council approved our city engineer to advertise and receive bids for a large diameter sewer cleaning project. Bids were received by four companies and were read publicly on August 6th. After review and a pre-award conference with a low bidder, it was determined by our city engineer that the bidder was non-responsive due to pricing a different scope other than specified. Therefore, based on a recommendation from our city engineer and requesting to award the contract to the second bidder Rogue Industrial in the amount of $836,084.34. This project was budgeted and funds are available in the Sewer Contractual Services Account.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Councilman Cabal Watten?
Mr. Mayor, just a note of clarification. Under the support and background information, it does have a typo in here, and it says Rouge Industrial instead of Rogue. So I, if we could just clarify that, uh, up, cover letter.
Oh, it's in the cover?
Yeah, right there, it just says Rouge Industrial. So we're actually awarding to Rogue, Rogue Industrial.
Yep, we'll make sure it goes the right way.
It's the technicalities.
Yeah, that matters. Alrighty, anyone else? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Kevin. Next up, we have here authorized fire suppression system repairs at the Westfield Activities Center.
The state of Michigan requires dry pipe sprinkler systems to be tested every three years. We had an inspection at the Westfield Center in August that revealed the system was in dire need of repair. The system has 91 sprinkler heads, which are all obsolete now. Many heads were found to be inoperable, so the system could not pass inspection. After consulting with the fire chief, it was determined that these repairs cannot wait until renovations to the building happen, and they needed to be repaired ASAP. Six fire suppression companies were contacted and two provided quotes. Therefore, I'm seeking authorization to proceed with the lowest bidder certicide to replace all 91 sprinkler heads and all associated piping in the amount of $52,492.87, with a 10%, 10% contingency for any unforeseen issues that arise.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Kevin. Last one here, authorization to perform a scoping study on the refuse transfer station.
The city's refuse transfer station was constructed in 1964 and was operated for almost 50 years until 2013. At that time, the overhead crane suffered a catastrophic failure, which was proven too costly to repair. The 16-foot-deep trash pit has since been filled in and capped with concrete. The city currently utilizes Riverview Land Preserve to dispose of trash, but the future is uncertain with them nearing capacity. Therefore, I'm seeking authorization for professional services by Fishback Engineers to conduct a scoping study to determine a path forward. Fishback will utilize electrical, mechanical, structural, and environmental engineers to complete the study. The total cost of the study is $35,950, expected to take four months.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, next up from our HR Director, Ms. Perry, our Blue Cross Blue Shield Medicare Advantage Plan.
Good evening. In front of you are four contracts, and this would cover all of our retirees who are 65 and older or have Medicare eligibility, so approximately 180 lives. This is for the 2025 plans, and of course, like everything else, it's gone up. We did anticipate this, so it has been included into the budget. So with your concurrence, I'm seeking your concurrence on this, on these contracts and to authorize me to sign them with Blue Cross Blue Shield.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Benedetti?
Yeah, just, so are there changes with this compared? So I mean, you'll be, if they come knocking, you'll be able to explain to them, because there'll be some that'll still come and.
Yep, so there's no changes, so this is exactly what we have in place today. I did have a note that we did do a market check to see if we could get better rates with any other carriers. We could not do better than this. So we're sticking with Blue Cross Blue Shield, so there'll be no changes for any of those 180 people.
Okay, cool, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. All right, Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Beaker, we have the Cultural Center Fire Alarm System.
Thank you, Mayor. The Cultural Center Fire Alarm is about 35 years old and is currently outdated. The system is an old burglar alarm system that is being used as a fire alarm system. Certified Alarm, who maintains our, all of our fire systems in the Recreation Department, has reviewed the system and quoted a replacement that will work off of internet and radio systems instead of an analog phone lines. There will be replaced, there will be replaced, smoke alarms, detectors, and new cabinet to the house system in the basement. The new system will allow for the Emily Frank House to be remotely monitored for any potential fires in the future. Requesting that the normal bidding process be waived, and the bid from Certified Alarm be accepted to maintain consistency throughout the buildings. There is money available in the Building Improvements Account.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Tim. All right, Chief Hawkins, I've got two items here. First up being the Tyler Technology Cloud LE Software.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you is a renewal for the yearly cost for law enforcement software suite through Tyler Technology. This includes our records management, corrections, and dispatching software. Trenton's share of the total bill is broken down to 7.48% of the CINC communities, which has Trenton owing $29,560.51. This is a slight increase from prior years due to the conversion to the cloud, which was voted on by CINC members at the July meeting. There is money in the overall budget line item. I'm seeking your approval for the Tyler Technology invoice for $29,560.51.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any for the Councilman Peruzzi?
Yeah, Chief, is there an opportunity to have a term on the contract? You know, like, three years, five years, perhaps, you know, get a cost savings?
I know we were looking at different records, records management software at our CINC meetings and at the, the Chiefs' meetings. Right now, it's the yearly cost, but I think as a group, we're looking at trying to do things different. And the first step is this cloud software.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Cabal Watten?
Mike, if I missed it, I apologize. How many licenses does this cover for the department?
We have unlimited use for the license. Any user has access to it.
Okay, all right.
All right, seeing none unanimously so ordered. Thanks, Chief. Next up, we have the Flock Camera LPR Project.
Thank you. In front of you, the Trenton Police Department is looking to implement Flock license plate reader cameras in various locations to enhance safety of our community. Our extensive research has spanned over a year and a half and has found various partners to help with funding. One camera costs $3,000 per year, and installation is a one-time cost between 800 and 1,250, depending on the roadway. The Trenton Police Department will utilize a combination of community partners and a DCC technology grant for reimbursement of camera costs. Neighboring jurisdictions have already been on the Flock train here. Certain agencies have 50, some have 20, some have 2, 30. These would be our first ones here for the city of Trenton. So what I'm asking is the approval of the Flock Camera Project not to exceed $30,000. There is money in machinery and equipment line item.
So moved.
Support. Support.
Moved and supported. Councilman Peruzzi?
Yeah, Chief, are we the last of the Down River communities that have gone to this Flock system?
I would say probably 80% of them have gone to this Flock system extensively. Another agency had a different system, and they've since converted to Flock, so there are only just a few that do not have the system.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else? Seeing none unanimously so ordered.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, next up, our wastewater treatment plant superintendent, Ms. Willison, approval for an emergency purchase of a 480V step-down power center.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. On September 23rd, we experienced a failure in our step-down power center at the Elizabeth Park Pump Station. This power center basically takes 480 volts in the station and steps it down to 110, so we can use it for various things in the station. We were able to bypass this outage and get power restored to the 110, but obviously, this is something we need to replace immediately. The only unit we found available in the area was from Service Electric in Romulus at a cost of $6,369.42. I'm asking your approval of this purchase, and it would come out of the capital equipment account.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussions? Seeing none unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Julie. All right, Madam Clerk, do we have any late items tonight?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. I will defer to our Mayor Protem, Councilman Benedetti, now for our disbursements and statements, and then our reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to make a motion to authorize disbursements October 7th, 2024, an amount of $8,849,853.18.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none unanimously so ordered.
Moving place on file, the filing monthly reports, the City Beautiful Commission minutes, September 11th, 2024, Downtown Development Authority Minutes, August 8th, 2024. Fire Police Pension Board Draft Minutes, September 11th, 2024. Library Governing Board Minutes, June 26th, 2024. Traffic Safety Commission Minutes, September 4th, 2024.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilman.
Sure.
All right, we'll go to other council business. I actually don't have anything for everyone this evening, so we'll get started with Councilman Peruzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say thank you to the vendors who weathered the storm for the lobster festivities. It was, it was, seemed to be well-attended as far as the vendors, and I just felt bad that the weather dampened the, the event, and there's enough people that showed up, but not as much as they had hoped. It was nice to see the turnout, even though it wasn't as grand as we had all hoped, and I just want to say thank you, thank you to those vendors for participating, and hopefully next year will be a lot better.
Good, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Cabal Watten?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to first start off thanking Tim Beaker and your team, Heather, over there for the Halloween walk this past weekend. That's, if you haven't gone to it, it's, was this the second year, Tim, or that you've done this? And it is, it's really cool. The kids really like it. DIPAC is a part of it. National Honor Society is a part of it, and was I right in that? Oh, was it? Okay, sorry, third. I've been to two, I think. So, but no, you know, it's a good community engagement event, and, you know, really well put on. Heather has lots of ideas, I know. And so it's always fun to listen to her and, you know, you know, bounce ideas off of you. So, no, thank you, Tim. That's a great project and a great service that you provide to the city and its residents. Also want to thank, you know, just the community in general, Police Fire DPS, you know, high school for the homecoming parade that they had not too long ago. You know, it's just always nice to, to be a part of the community and, you know, see everybody out there lining the streets, enjoying, you know, enjoying the, the parade and kind of pushing the, the homecoming court and everybody to the, the homecoming football game. So thank you all that had a hand in that, and other than that, Mayor, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to congratulate Trafford Square Business Owners in celebrating their 50th anniversary, and I appreciate all the vendors that came out. It was great to see all the classic cars. And the Fire Department was out there too, so it was a wonderful time talking with all the community members and the guests. So, yeah, that's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilwoman. Thanks for being there. All right, Councilman Benedetti?
I have nothing here.
Councilwoman Hornbeck?
I'll make up for that. I forgot to mention the last meeting. I wanted to thank the DPW for their incredibly diligent work on the water main break that was on Grange. My in-laws live right down the street and gave me hourly updates on everything that was going on, so I know it was not an easy fix, and it was a lot of work, and they were diligent and, you know, hung in there for hours and hours and hours, so thank you for that. Also, the Trenton Educational Foundation is hosting their annual tailgate this Friday, right before the football game, right outside of the gates when you walk in. For $5, you can have dinner and learn about what the Trenton Educational Foundation has to offer, the students and staff of Trenton Public Schools. And two very positive notes, Trenton High School Football Team won a very hard-fought victory on Friday, so congratulations to them, and go Tigers.
Yeah, Tigers pulled it off too, just before we got started. All right, Madam Clerk, do you have anything for us this evening?
I, I'll just mention the next regular council meeting is Monday, October 21st at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Madam Sussar, do you have anything tonight? All right, thank you. And now let's see, Mr. McCullough, Mandy got it. Cool, nothing from the Treasurer's Office. All right, anything, any of our department heads have anything tonight? Chief Hawkins up first here.
Making up for lost time.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that on October 3rd, at the Traffic Safety Commission meeting, Traffic Control Order 2024-02 was instituted, which removed the barricades at Third and Maple, which, which some of you have already seen. It is for a 90-day study, as Traffic Sergeant Benares can do. It will come back before this body in 90 days to determine if that was the correct fix or not. We looked back and reviewed Traffic Control Order 01-211, that was supposed to close the roads. It was not completed as intended. And so with the institution of the social district and increased pedestrians, this is something we wanted to review because there are people coming through the alley. There's a blind spot there at the Fire Department, and for safety, this was done. I know it won't make the residents happy on Third right away, but it is for the safety of everyone around. So in 90 days, we'll be back to this body to make a recommendation whether to put them back, change it, or keep them eliminated. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate that. All right, any other department heads have anything? Not seeing any. We'll go to public comment now. Best that anyone wishing to speak, please begin with their name and address. Please limit their comments to five minutes, and please direct all questions through me. We'll go to any folks in person first, then those on the Zoom, so anyone on Zoom wants to speak, please use the raise hand function, so.
Hi, my name is Heather Smiley. I'm a candidate for U.S. Representative in Congress. For those of you who've already received an absentee ballot, you'd see my name on there. So I wanted to come and introduce myself. The 6th Congressional District is rather large. It includes all of Washtenaw County, Western Wayne County, including Down River, a little bit of Oakland County, and a little bit of Monroe County, so it's a big district. I'm actually a former resident of Trenton, and my husband is a graduate of Trenton High School, so I have a close tie to this area. I live in Riverview. The, one of the reasons I'm running is I'm not really happy with, you know, if you ask yourself, is, is the economy better now than it used to be, and it's not? So I'm really not happy with the direction that the country, the country's heading in right now. I do have a global business background. I retired from, I started at Ford Motor Company working for, with the UAW, and then moved into management, where I retired, retired recently with, uh, my span of control was global data and analytics. So I look at the data, and some of the things that I'm looking at right now with our economy, it's crushing everyday people. And a lot of people I know are living off credit cards, and from a municipal perspective, right, that translates into, you know, you want to keep the residents here, and you, you don't want to see a high turnover rate. And obviously, that translates into funding as well. So I am quite aware of what's going on Down River, because I, like I said, I live right next door, so I, I know what's going on with the remediation work for all of the property along the Detroit River there. I've been following that very closely. And I think I can make a difference where we've collectively, all the Down River communities have had a problem, you know, going back decades, and nothing's really happened. We get a lot of lip service, but, but nothing seems to materialize, so that's something that, given my regulation background in the different. given my regulation background in the different industries, I can bring something unique to the table there, so I can move that forward with, you know, different agencies. And I, I know I'm, I'm short of time, but I thought I'd let you know I will be here after the meeting if anybody has any questions. I am running against Debbie Dengel, and she is a very nice person. I know the mayor hosted her and Gretchen Whitmer and a bunch of other people at Behind Kennedy Arena this past summer. Debbie's very nice, but you'd be surprised if you looked at her voting record. I suspect that it's, it would be disturbing for everybody in this, in this chamber right now. So I will make myself available, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smiley. Appreciate that. Hey, sir.
Good evening. My name is Joe Utivik. I live at one-four, one-four-six, one-four, Minot Gibraltar Road, Unit Number Seven. I attend a community Bible church here in Trenton, Michigan, and I would like to make a public announcement. I'm encouraging our community leaders, our residents, the mayor, to bring your children and/or grandchildren to our hosting event called Enchanted Trails on, on October twenty-sixth from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. I'm encouraging that you see what our church is offering and the various costumes that we're putting together, and bring your kids and try to have a fun event at our facility. We are located on Fourth Street off of Benson Road. It used to be an elementary school, now it's right next to it, used to be Beaumont Hospital. So hopefully you will be able to attend, and we'll be able to see you there. I too am not very happy with the direction of our, the way our government's going. And recently, I got into a book called Bible and Government, and I would like to say, state something. Give me a minute here. The Bible is specific about this and states that the government state is a servant of God. God has been known to stir up the civil government for the, for the purposes of, for his purposes. So we draw to the conclusion that this is valuable and legitimate, and perhaps even more valuable institution. Reason why I'm mentioning this is because in the book, Bible and Government, it states that the government works for us, we the people. And I'm not very happy in a lot of the directions that, that the government goes to. So what I am encouraging is that our government leaders, please use the Bible to make your decisions on whatever you're voting for, whatever you're contemplating, whatever agenda you have coming up now or in the future. Because this is very important, because according to our church, we are, this earth was made by us from God, and of course, we are the caretaker, we are the caretakers of this. So we are going to be held responsible when we see Jesus and how we took care of this planet and what we did with it, and the decisions we made. So I am encouraging everybody, open your Bibles before you make any decisions. Look and read the Bible and pray about these, these decisions, because it's very important. And I'm not talking about just the federal government, the state government, and even the local government, because I'm not very happy with the, with the way this economy is going either and the direction we're going into. And there's a lot of ideas I have that we can change things around, but the number one thing is, we have to start realizing that who, who, who we have to report to ultimately. And thank you, and a blessed evening.
Thank you very much for coming, Mr. Utivik. All right, do we have anyone else? Not seeing any on Zoom. I will entertain a motion to move. With support?
Support.
Moved and supported for adjournment at 7:34 PM. See you all in two weeks.